We convene the public hearing and bubble meeting and attendance, all board members are present. We do have a quorum for the meeting and public comments agenda, non agenda items pursuant to board policy number two, three, five, zero. Public comment may be limited to five minutes per person or 30 minutes per topic. All speakers would like to comment regarding a matter on the public meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting in which the agenda item is called. All speakers who would like to comment regarding the matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting for open forum on non agenda items. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the rear of the boardroom from the recording secretary or online. We'll start with the pledge, Mr. Buffalo, would please lead us.
I would stand, turn your hand over your heart and begin with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We hear a motion to approve the agenda. Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes with five yes votes. Open forum on non agenda items, I do have some public comment cards, Mr. Newby. Push the button.
Hello. Board members, President Knutson and administration, faculty colleagues, students, fellow citizens. I want to thank President Knutson and ABC's board and administration for their outstanding leadership during the events of the last 18 months. In a time of global turmoil that is unprecedented in our lifetime, where our understanding changes daily and fear often trumps reason, our college leaders made decisions that reflected a clear understanding of the big picture. Of the many reasons, AVC's community should salute its leaders at the top is their decision to resist vaccine mandates. The call for mandates is based upon three false assumptions. One, that COVID vaccine is safe, which it isn't. That it prevents COVID transmission, which even the CDC now admits it doesn't. And that they provide the only means for curbing COVID. Thousands of COVID survivors treated with repurposed FDA approved drugs can testify this is false. All vaccines carry risks, government, health agencies and industry agree. To help citizens assess the risks, the government created its vaccine adverse event reporting system, VAERS. VAERS doesn't assign cause, but the website openvaers.org compiles VAERS reports into a usable format that allows readers to examine reports and judge for themselves. Injury cause is often determined in the courtroom. But the government's Public Readiness and Emergency Preparedness Act, PREP, shields COVID vaccine manufacturers and distributors from liability, robbing citizens of their right to due process for this product. This leaves pharmaceutical corporations and their advocates free to dismiss charges of injury as baseless coincidence and to declare their products safe. Last week's VAERS report lists more post COVID vaccine deaths in nine months than deaths following all vaccines combined during the past 30 years. Over 14,000 deaths and 620,000 injuries. Eighty four thousand of these are serious injuries such as strokes, heart attacks, seizures, brain damage, amputations, et cetera. By the government's own metric, then, the COVID jab is the riskiest vaccine since the founding of VAERS. VAERS documents only a fraction of actual vaccine injuries according to a government-sponsored study. The 2011 Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare Report submitted to the Health and Human Services states fewer than 1% of vaccine adverse offense are reported. Dr. Peter McCullough, M.D., Vice Chief of Internal Medicine, Baylor Medical Center Dallas, says the COVID vaccine is far and away the most lethal toxic biologic agent ever injected into a human body in American history. A host of other M.D.s agree, where there is risk, there must be choice. President Biden has called for a nationwide vaccine mandate, removing the need for college mandate supporters to attempt mandates. I ask the board and administration to continue their wise policy of resisting the emotional calls for vaccine mandates. Thank you.
Cindy Hendricks.
Good evening, Mr. Knutson and members of the board. When I was first hired at ABC, I had to provide proof of a negative TB test, which made sense. TB is an airborne disease, spread by coughing, sneezing, et cetera. You don't know if you've come into contact with it and it can have serious consequences. Since then, I've had to provide proof of a negative TB test a couple of times. A year like, a year later, my daughter went to college. She had to get a meningitis vaccine before she could move into the dorm. Again, an airborne disease can have serious complications and is spread through close contact with others. When I was getting ready, I did a little research and according to the CDC, outbreaks of meningitis have become very rare in the United States, likely due to the prevalence of vaccinations and education about the disease. Now we're faced with another airborne disease which is mutating and becoming more contagious and more deadly, yet there is no testing or vaccine mandate. It's not as if there isn't a precedent for colleges requiring vaccines and/or testing. It's not even without the precedent in the Antelope Valley. The high school district where I used to work is requiring testing and/or vaccines of its employees. It seems the current policy is not serving students in our community. Last spring at a planning meeting, we were told that all, that in all rooms, the chairs or desks would be marked so that there would be six feet apart between, so students would know where to sit. I teach in three different rooms and this has not happened in any of those rooms. My office is in U-Hazy Hall, outside of U-Hazy Hall on the concrete next to the planners. There's marks for telling students where to sit so they can be six feet apart. However, walking through U-Hazy Hall in the area by the subway, there's a bunch of tables put together so that up to 24 students can be seated. Yes, I've counted multiple times, including today. At last count, there have been 148, although I think it was maybe 151 positive cases of COVID at ABC. Many of these have occurred since the August reopening events. In fact, I got a notice after Reg Fest that I had been exposed to COVID, to COVID. I have been vaccinated and luckily I live alone, so I'm not going to spread it to anyone, but it was a bit unnerving. It's difficult to get a clear picture of what's going on on campus because of how the reports are put out. I've had several students inform me that they either were exposed to COVID or post COVID positive or someone in their family. I only know this because students told me and they asked me, can I please attend on Zoom? To which I say, yes. I have not received any official notifications from the college. As educators and members of the Antelope Valley community, we should be leading the way with protocols and education regarding stopping the spread of this virus. We can and must do better. Thank you.
Dr. Mark McGovern.
Hello, Mr. President and members of the board. On September 7th, both the Citrus and El Camino Community College District Board of Trustees adopted a COVID-19 vaccine or test requirement for its students, faculty and staff. That now leaves only one community college district in all of Los Angeles County without one, and that is us. The University of California system has the requirement as well as the Cal State system. K through 12 has a requirement. Outside of LA County, one of our closest neighboring community college districts, Kern, unanimously passed a requirement for their colleges. What are we doing? Seemingly nothing. I urge the board to call a special session to implement at a minimum a vaccine or test and requirement for all students and employees. In case the urgency of this matter is not apparent, let me give you some troubling statistics. According to the CDC, as of September 12th, 53.8% of Americans are fully vaccinated. California sits at 57.1%. Here are the vaccination rates, fully vaccinated, for the zip codes in the immediate vicinity of Al Valley College. Three, five, sorry, 93534 is 42%. 93535 is 41.3%. 93536 is 41.1 and 93550 is 44.4. This is information I obtained today from the California Department of Public Health. These vax, these rates of vaccination are the lowest in LA County. The data includes all ages, by the way. According to the Department of Health and Human Services, as of the weekend, September 2nd, AV Hospital has 100% of its inpatient beds in use with 24% being COVID cases. ICU beds are also at 100% capacity with 36 being COVID cases. They are experiencing 48 new COVID cases on average daily. Pomdale Regional Medical Center has 83% of its inpatient beds in use with 30% being COVID cases. ICU beds are at 84% with 53% being COVID cases. They are experiencing 47 new COVID cases on a seven day average. These are among the highest rates in LA County. Additionally, ABC's population is over 80% minority with 73% being African American Black or Hispanic Latinx. According to the CDC, these populations are 2.8 times more likely to be hospitalized and two times more likely to die of the virus. How is ABC doing with COVID? No one knew until two hours ago, when the college finally released its COVID email update. This was the first update, which used to be weekly, since August 24th. According to the update, there were only three new cases for the week ended September 10th. This number makes no sense as one of my colleagues in chemistry had four positive COVID cases in her class last week. So I haven't got a chance to research that because the email came out two hours ago, but that's the information I have. We have a responsibility to our students, employees and community to provide a safe physical environment. This is stated in ABC's philosophy, vision, mission and value statement on our website. We are not currently living up to that promise. One last note, one of our biology faculty is a doctor of public health. He is an infectious disease expert with decades of experience working in the field. He actually teaches a 300 level course on infectious disease. I asked him how much the college has referred to him for guidance or advice. He said, not at all, even though he has reached out to the administration to offer his help. I thank you for the time and attention and I hope you will take the appropriate action to protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. David Adams.
Good evening, David Adams, instructor of business here at Antelope Valley College. I am not here to talk about COVID testing. I am here to talk about something that's related to this great body. It has come to my attention that the board desires to limit public speaking comments from five to three minutes. As you can see, when an issue comes up, we have passionate faculty and other members of the community who desire to have their opinions known. I find it very ironic that a few days ago was 9/11. And a nation that comes together to fight against terrorist acts, acts by, by people harbored in countries that don't have the freedom that we have. If you don't believe me, take a look at the people who left, tried to die, or actually died trying to catch a flight by holding on to the flight and knowing that if they were to stay, they would lose their lives. I am not asking for a lot. I am asking that if we have five minutes or one time a month to see you guys, one time a month, that you guys give us five minutes. Restrict our time from five to three minutes while maybe legal is wrong and unethical. Right now I have about three and a half minutes left. And I will yield the rest of my time to everyone else. Please do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Wanko.
Good evening, board members and Mr. Knutson. My name is John Wanko. I'm a counselor with the Office for Students with Disabilities. I represent the Counseling Division on the Academic Senate and I'm also an instructor here at ABC. I come to you tonight to express my deep concern over and my frustration with the current high flex delivery of instruction here at this institution. I have grave concerns, not only for our students, but for our college as well. I teach two sections of HD 101. It's called college and life management. It is a recommended course for brand new students. It's also a course that fulfills the CSUG requirement for lifelong learning as well as being a UC transferable course. The majority of my students in my two classes are brand new college students. This is their very first semester. We're in the beginning of week five. There has not been a single week that I have not had to call ITS to come and to fix a problem in the classroom. I consider myself fairly tech savvy. I taught during COVID via Zoom with very little issues. I highly commend ITS. They do a great job, but it is so frustrating that, for instance, today in the middle of my lecture, I lost the entire section of Zoom. My students could hear me, but they couldn't see anything I was presenting. I couldn't see them. I couldn't see the chat. I had to call, I had to stop everything I was doing, call ITS. They came in and said, oh, for some reason Zoom went out of sync, we have to restart it. So here's my concern. My classes are 80 minutes long. They are three LAG per week. In an 80 minute class, I am typically losing 15 to 20 minutes because ITS has to come in and install a new driver or something's happened with Zoom. It's ongoing tech issues every week. I look at my students, by the time I'm ready to restart class or get our class started, they look so disengaged, so disinterested. We have schools in this valley, for-profit schools, that are actively marketing our students. If we're worried about enrollment and retention of students, we need to be worried about how instruction is being delivered in this high flex model. The, the technology is just not set up. So I'm losing instructional time. Our students look very frustrated. I'm frustrated. I'm concerned that I'm not, we're not fulfilling our obligations to the Cal State and UC system. We're saying that these students are getting three LAG hours per week of instruction and I know that they're not because of these tech issues. So I am just very, very frustrated with the, the technology and with the, the high flex delivery of, of instruction. So I hope that the board will look at that and will actively look at how the impact is on students as well as on faculty. I do want to add on the side, since we were talking about COVID, I do want to note that over the Labor Day weekend, I was informed by students in my face-to-face class, they had been notified that our class was exposed to COVID and they were under quarantine. Yet I was never told that. So over Labor Day weekend, I was wondering, what do I do? My class is quarantined till Thursday and, you know, I emailed HR, I emailed my dean, my director. Tuesday morning, which was the next day of work that week, I'm in Palmdale doing Office for Students with Disabilities services. I live in Kern County, so it's about a 45 minute drive to Palmdale. I start my workday at 7:30 in the morning. I'm one of those people that likes to be prepared. So if you have a 7:30 appointment with me in OSD.
30 seconds.
I have everything ready to go. It was not until eight o'clock that morning that I heard back from HR that if I was vaccinated and asymptomatic, I should report to work. So a little disappointed in that. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Bassam Salama.
Hi folks, this is the first time I'm at a board meeting, but I thought it was essential because I teach microbiology and I teach the infectious disease course here at ABC. I've been in the public health arena since 1992. And sometimes I see certain risk factors that we have that we need to look at a little bit closer. We are, we are, we have all these nice posters about wearing the mask and so forth on the building doors. My concern is this, I'm in the science building and we have the subway area where folks get their sandwiches. And there's the area where they have the eatery where they sit down to eat. Now, when they're eating, they don't have their masks on. After eating, they're still there and they're talking. The other day I had, a couple of my students were, were there. They had no masks on and there was about maybe 10 or 12 students playing board games and they didn't have their masks on. Now there's chicken wire between the hallway and the eatery area. And I don't think that's virus proof. So nobody there is wearing a mask. Maybe a few of them will wear a mask after, bless you, after they're done. But my concern is this, when I'm walking down the hallway, I consider myself the mask police, mask, mask up within, you know, your nose and stuff. Other day I saw this fellow, totally no mask whatsoever at the subway getting a sandwich. I let him know that to be in the building, you have to have a mask. And he says, I don't have one. And I said, you really need to have one to enter the building. There are signs out there that say so. And he says, I said, you need to wear one. He says, make me. Now, when you say make me wear a mask, and he's about maybe twice my size, he came from the welding, I think welding or air conditioning or something. He was not, he was a student. I mean, I had a choice, either make him or give him one. So I went to, I, I'm one of those folks who likes to achieve the best that I need to achieve with what I'm set to do, which is give them the mask. To get into a fight with somebody like that, I have a nice crowbar in my office we used to open boxes with. But we're not going to adjust anybody's attitude with that. I leave my guns at home. And so what we're doing here is we need somebody to enforce this mask thing. I don't see anybody from law enforcement, the sheriff's department in the building. I don't see any cadets to do this. Somebody other than us as instructors has to go up there and tell these folks. It'd be nice to have somebody in the chaos or something like at a podium at the front of the building, show some force because I cannot go around and police everything all the time. I'm not here 24/7. I'm here about 12 hours a day, 14 hours a day. So that is my main concern. These folks, can we move the tables outside? I'm not saying shut the, shut the subway down, but can we move the tables to a safer area? If that is possible, then that's good. Because if we trace these cases through the subway, to ABC subway, it can become what you call a point source of infection. It becomes a classic case of study in epidemiology where something could have been done, should have been done, but wasn't done. This is to protect everybody. This virus is not a Democrat virus, it's not a Republican virus, it's not a Christian, Muslim, Buddhist, Jewish virus, it is a coronavirus. We are all at risk. Try to reduce the risk. So we need either some kind of mask enforcement or tell us what to do because it is my job also to go around and get into fights with somebody. I'm not going to fight anybody. I have a bad knee and a bad back. But we need to get something done about this because I cannot go around enforcing this. Jedy can't go, anybody else who's an instructor here can't go around like that. Thank you very much.
Jedidiah Lobos.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jedidiah Lobos. I teach biology here at Al Valley College and I submit to you a comment regarding the proper tracing of COVID cases on campus. I, like some of my colleagues, have been the unfortunate recipients of quarantine notices. While many of us anticipated that it would have been a matter of time before receiving one, what we did not anticipate was the breakdown in the tracing process. Based on my recent experience with a quarantine class, two questions arise. First, if I'm to believe that the contact tracer or tracing team is overwhelmed with cases, which is what I've been told, then why isn't that information reported to everyone at the college? As of now, our weekly emails seem to under-report when many of us are experiencing. Also, the college is known for at least, and I'm using conservative number here, at least three months, that some classes were going to open face-to-face. So why didn't we plan appropriately for the worst case scenario? That the possibility that we would be overrun with cases early in the semester. Secondly, with all due respect, I do question the qualifications of the tracing team. And I only do so because in my particular case, my quarantine notice not only came over a week late, but they admitted on email that they tracked the wrong student. This, and I, I trust that everyone on this board can agree, that is unacceptable. The job is to trace in order to minimize exposure. If the wrong student is traced, there's no way to do that properly. I've been told that more contact tracers will be hired to fill the need. But I feel that more should be done. I, I feel that instead of just hiring more people who might do the job right, we need to hire people who know how to do the job. I, I want to close by, by saying something personally, you know, in, in my house, I've got, I've got three kids under the age of seven. And I teach my children that it's okay to make mistakes. Perfectly fine, as long as they admit to the mistakes and they do something to fix it. So I urge this body to do just that. Admit to the mistakes that we've made and do something to actually fix it for the sake of their faculty, the staff, and more importantly, the students on this campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina McDermott.
Good evening. It's nice to see all of you. I'm Tina McDermott, Communication Studies Faculty and Tenure Review Coordinator. I wanted to speak about two issues, but I'll keep it short. I do want to echo what Professor Wanko said about high flex. It's a very, very challenging technological situation. And I've said, we're not teaching two modalities. We're teaching three. We're teaching to the room, we're teaching on Zoom and we're teaching them together. I have been using technology and computers for 25 years at least. I started on DOS, okay? And I'm not afraid of technology. I'm not afraid of learning new things. I'm not afraid of making mistakes in front of my students. I'm not, but it's demoralizing for them to see me struggle the way I am so publicly with all the various, various technical issues that can go wrong with sound, with the cameras. I teach public speaking, the students need to come up, not just me. And we try to be engaging. We don't just talk as a lecture PowerPoint. That's not all teachers do. We try to have engaging activities. It's very difficult to integrate that into one room with the two modalities. So So I urge you to consider how difficult Hi-Flex is and that we are, we are professional educators, we are dedicated faculty. We are not whining or complaining, we are telling you that this is pushing us. And it's, and students, I, I really appreciated what he said, students may well go somewhere else. The second thing I'd like to talk about is mandating a vaccine. I actually was told I have to decide between Hi-Flex and face-to-face for the spring. I would consider face-to-face if Antelope Valley College would implement a vaccine or, and testing and/or testing mandate, like so many other colleges. And I would like to read to you a list of California community colleges that have implemented such a vaccine and testing mandate. College of the Canyons, the Three Colleges of the Kern County District, Glendale College, Chaffee, Citrus, Pasadena City, the Three Colleges of Ventura County District, the Four Colleges of Los Rios, the Nine Colleges of the Los Angeles County, City College District, Santa Monica, Allen Hancock, Berkeley City, Saracose Coast District, Cypress, De Anza, the City Colleges of San Francisco, the Four Colleges of the Riverside District, the Three Colleges of the San Diego District, Santa Barbara City College, and of course, the entire UC system and the entire Cal State system. I have been told that we can't do that at AVC. What is special here? What is exceptional that sets us apart from all of these districts all over California? I submit to you nothing. There's no more evidence we need to prove that this can in fact be done at Antelope Valley College as it is being done everywhere, and we must do it. So please listen to two things I'm asking. Please give us the choice of teaching modality, a real choice, that fits our discipline and our teaching practices and the situation on the ground, as other colleges have done. And please, implement mandatory vaccine and testing. We need that to keep us all safer and to help us in a very serious way to move forward and out of this pandemic, because all credible experts and evidence has pointed us to that way out and forward. And Antelope Valley College is a pillar of the community. What are we saying to our community? If we don't follow science, follow evidence, and implement something that is known to keep everyone safer. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have for open forum on non-agenda items. And we'll move on to presentations. Eleven point one, presentation by Antelope Valley Transit Authority.
Evening. President Knutson, distinguished members of the board. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes of your time this evening. A few months ago, we had a agenda item at ABTA where we named several of our transit centers after distinguished members of our community who contributed to the Green Fleet efforts of our agency. Amongst those people were Diane Knippel. At the time, we did not realize that it would cause any ruffled feathers at the board. And that mistake is a hundred percent mine, and I take full ownership of that. We view this transfer center that we're building at the college as our transfer center. It's got about two million dollars worth of our deductive charging technology. Bus route we've created is our buses, our drivers, our expenditures to make all this happen for you, the students and the community. So we did not realize that through an easement that put part of that station on your property, that it would cause a jurisdictional issue as far as how we named that, that station. However, we do stand behind the fact that we really think that the investment we're putting in that station, the investment we put in creating the routes for your students and for our community, and the hard work and effort that jointly we've put into this project allowed, had allowed us the ability to name this station after one of your own, Ms. Knippel. And one of the simple reasons for that is for, for eighteen years she's been a member of the AB Foundation. For over ten, close to ten years she's been board member of the ABTA. The last several as our vice chair. Her hard work and vision along with that, the rest of her board members and our board chair have led to a hundred percent zero-mission local fleet currently running on our streets. Sixty-four buses with no tailpipe emissions. We've got another twenty-four coming in and by, between now and the end of December, they'll make our local and our commuter fleet a hundred percent zero-mission. Provision led our two agencies, ABTA and BYD, to create a foundation, fifty thousand R endowment for the college to help educate future students on zero-mission technology. She's been a pillar of our community and a pillar of our board. And I believe firmly in my heart that we made the right decision to name our transit center after her. And if there was any mistakes made, it was mine. And I hope that you take it out on me and allow us to continue with naming this station after Ms. Knippel. And thank you very much for your time, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And eleven point two, presentation by Academic Affairs.
Members of the board, President Knutson, good evening. A couple of months ago, there had been a request to give a presentation on success goals for the college. So I have this presentation ready for you tonight. I'm going to start with statewide numbers and, and initiatives and then drill down to the numbers at AVC. So in 2017, the Chancellor's Office published a publication called The Vision for Success that outlined the, the vision of the state for equity measures. A couple of months ago in July of 2021, they updated that document. And the goal was to reaffirm the equity and equity measures in a time of recovery post-COVID. Hopefully, post-COVID in future months. So, the overarching goal of, of Vision for Success is to reduce equity gaps across all measures by forty percent within five years and to fully close these gaps within ten years. And there were seven commitments that were featured in the 2017 Vision for Success. One of them was to put students in front and center of every single initiative that we would have. Always design and decide with the student in mind. And pair high performance with high expectations and high support for our students. Foster the use of data. Take ownership of goals and performances. Enable action and thoughtful innovation and lead the work of partnering across the system. And we do that in a variety of ways with our partners in other community colleges. The five-year system-wide goals was to increase completion of degrees, credentials, certificates, and jobs, specific skills set by twenty percent between 2017 and 2022. Increase transfers to UC and CSU by thirty-five percent between 2017 and 2022. Decrease the average number of units accumulated, which is currently system-wide at eighty-seven units to seventy-nine units. Increase the number of existing CTE students employed in their field of study to seventy-six percent from the current sixty percent. Reduce equity gaps by forty percent across all the above measures by 2022 for all groups and fully close those gaps by 2027. So this was a ten-year vision by the state. And close the regional gaps across all of the above by 2027. So now we're going to drill down to our numbers at AVC. So the first goal, which is completion. So the goal was to increase our numbers by twenty percent. And the baseline that we have used for this presentation and, and in our reporting is based on the 2016, 2017 numbers. So when you see a smiley green face, that means that we have, we have done great strides. And on the red face means that we still have some work to do. So these are our completion numbers for AS and AA degrees, as well as our transfer degrees. So we're doing pretty well there. For the CCCO-approved credit certificate, so there are two types of certificates that we issue. And one of them is approved by the Chancellor's Office and the other one is, is local. So the number that you see here is for the Chancellor's Office-approved Certificates of Achievement. And we're doing well there as well. Earning an associate degree, AAS, that's, no, we still have some more work to do on that. And attain the vision goal completion rate. So that's, that's also really good. The second goal is transfer. So this is measured by two different criteria. The first one has to do with the earning of an associate degree for transfer. And we're doing well there. And all students would transfer to a CSU or US, UC system. And we, we still have some ways to go in, in that front to make the thirty-five percent increase that is our target. The third goal has to do with decreasing the number of units that students complete prior to transfer. So currently, or in, I'm sorry, in the 2016, 2017 baseline, our average units completed by our students is eighty-nine point five. And what we need to get to is seventy-nine, that that's our goal. So currently, we are sitting at eighty-seven point six for the twenty-nine, twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year. The fourth goal has to do with the workforce. So the criteria used for this metric has to do with, with the median annual earning. And we wanted to see a five percent increase, and we have achieved that. Attaining a living wage, and we wanted a twenty percent increase there. And that's, that's been successful across the four-year period. Attaining the living wage and also the job, attaining a job for our CTE graduates that are closely related to their field of study. And that's been pretty successful also. So the rest of the package that you have, the packet that we have in front of you are the histograms that, that display the numbers that I went over. And showing where we are with all of these metrics and how well we've done. And again, I'm proud of what our faculty and staff have achieved in all of these metrics. And we'll continue to work to, to achieve the rest in the near future. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, I have some, please. Okay. I want to go back to goal number one and, sorry. I noticed that we don't have any data for 2020, 21. And I'm assuming that is, is that because of COVID? Or why, why, why we don't have data for that year?
It's in the works. The, the numbers are being, being gathered. This, this is the latest information that I was able to receive from our research group. So that, that will be coming soon as well.
Yeah, it, it, it looks like the, that in looking at goal one, two, and three, there's, there's elements of each one of those three goals that I, as an educator, am concerned about. One, we are not, we do not have, our number of students are declining who are even receiving an AA. And also the number of students on goal two that are transferring to a Cal State or a UC. I, I'm, I'm just trying to assess how we can, what, what is going on that is causing this?
So, some of the reasons are not necessarily local. They have to do with the transfer rates across the system to the UCs and the, and the CSUs. And in some cases, they have decreased the number of students that they take. In other cases, we have had, you know, a bump now on the road, you know, with COVID in the last two years. But let me assure you that we're looking at that and we're doing everything we can in order to align what we offer with classes that are required for students to transfer in a timely manner.
Yeah, I, I really like the seven commitments. I think they were very well-written and with the, with the purpose in mind. If we could go back to number four of the seven commitments, and it talks about fostering the use of data, inquiry and evidence. And I see that as that cycle of inquiry. Can you just briefly touch on what does the cycle of inquiry look like at AVC?
Absolutely. So I, I, I will address it from, from the point of view of academic affairs and a couple of the things that we're doing currently. So one of the things that I found in the, the short amount of time that I have been at AVC is that when we publish a schedule of classes that states that a particular program can be completed in a two-year period, let's say for an AA degree. Sometimes the way we schedule our classes do not really lend themselves to students being able to take the classes that they need every semester to finish in the two-year time cycle. So I and our group of deans have been looking very closely at that. And we are really tweaking our scheduling so that what we advertise as being a two-year cycle, a two-year program, can actually be achieved in a two-year cycle. So that really means having different departments work together so that if somebody is, let's say, a physics major and they have to take calculus and physics and chemistry, then these classes are scheduled in such a way that they can, they don't overlap or they don't have a huge gap between class one and class two so that students can actually have a friendly schedule and be able to complete those classes in a timely manner. So there's been a big push in, in my division, in my unit to work on this. And, and we talk about it on a weekly basis and making sure that our scheduling strategies are actually aligned with student success. And we use an enormous amount of data to address that. So that, that's, that definitely speaks to vision number four.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Excellent report, Vice President. Many years ago, two thousand and seven, I lived down below and I, I ran for the LA Community College District. As you well know, it has nine campuses. And I also applied for a couple of vacancies. One of the things that I promoted and was adamant about that when students enroll in a community college, they have a fixed schedule. And I think the DEI people are trying to do this. Make certain that student stays with that schedule and that we do everything we can to make it possible for them to stay. We can do all this stuff, but if they don't stay on track, they're going to come out of community college with a hundred and twenty units, tying up classes for other people. So, you know, I'm happy to see that we're going to try to reduce the number of units. And I hope that we somehow in the DEI or this, we promote the idea of a fixed schedule and we will follow you and help you through your program so you can get out of here in two years, either transfer or get a job. Thank you.
Thank you, that's an excellent point, Trustee Reeves, and I, I would like to address it quickly. So, one of the things that we have started is what we call the SMART schedule, which is a two-year schedule that we have developed for nine of our, our majors so far. And my hope is that throughout this year, we'll, we'll raise that number to fifty. So what that does is that we have classes scheduled with the times stamped. And a student who would enter a particular program will know exactly what their schedule is going to be within the two-year period. And we have tried to actually stay within the same time blocks for every single semester. And those are the, the, the classes that will actually remain in the schedule of classes. And they even are flagged in a different way in, in our system so that we will know not to cancel them. And, and we are actually advertising them as SMART schedules and marketing has been extremely helpful in, in pushing that forward for us.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Thank you.
I have a question. Um, first of all, let me congratulate you on your position. I'm glad to see you here. But secondly, it's wonderful to also hear that you are reviewing completion information to make sure that the program is a two-year program. The comment that I have is
The comment that I have is I would also review my goals. Because some of these goals, whereas, you know, they are ones that can be measured. I do believe that with some depth of thought between you and your team, that these goals could match being able to measure that two-year completion cycle. An example I would give would be attain the living wage. Now, that's labor data. So we don't need that as a necessary goal. But we can talk about the amount of students we want to complete career and technical education programs and what those increases look like. So that would be my one comment to, as you revamp and and look at ways to make the academic program stronger, that you also look at the goals and make sure that they are upholding the goals that you want to have as a department. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So absolutely, we can absolutely have that as an internal goal. But I just need to specify that the goals that I went over are actually not our goals, they're system-wide. So so we we need to follow up on these and report on them on a regular basis. But but that doesn't preclude us from having additional goals that would be local to our college.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
One more question, just kind of quickly. I worked with a lot of the students back in the day who worked for us at Parks and Rec and City of Palmdale and go to college here. I I never found that they could actually complete college two years because of their work schedules. Do we factor that in? Because a lot of them are working twenty-five, thirty hours a week. And I know some of our current students are doing the same thing.
So yes, we we, in in the SMART schedule that I mentioned, we have, we are looking at a day track as well as an evening and weekend track. So for example, for our airframe manufacturing program, the the SMART schedule that we have for the next two years is entirely on the weekends for that very purpose, to make sure that that students and many of whom fall in that category who work twenty, thirty, forty hours a week will still be able to pursue an education and finish it in a timely manner.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Mr. President, I just wanted to address one thing and and thank Isabel for her presentation. It was great. We also, from a counseling standpoint, are instituting a software package called EdUNAV. And it it plans two years in advance for students and registers them for the class so they can match up with the with the tools that Isabel's making available to students. She is correct, the vision for success goals are from the system and our strategic plan must match with the system. And we're directed in in that fashion. The other thing, and I know there's been some disagreement with this, but the reason for the twelve-week summer is to reduce time compression so that working students would have the opportunity to get more classes during the summer session and be supported by summer Pell.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Eleven point three, presentation of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two adopted budget.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees, President Knudsen and student board member. I'm Shami Barar, Vice President of Administrative Services, and tonight I'm presenting the twenty-one, twenty-two adopted budget. The topics discussed in this presentation include highlights from the governor's enacted budget, assumptions used for the district's twenty-one, twenty-two budget, an overview of the financial reporting twenty-one, twenty-two timeline, higher education emergency relief funds, twenty-twenty-one estimated actuals, twenty-one, twenty-two adopted budget, and estimates and assumptions for twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four. Highlights from the governor's enacted budget include a COLA of five point zero seven percent to the student-centered funding formula, the elimination of deferrals, capital outlay. This slide indicates twenty point three million. That's the total project cost, the actual cost is, the actual funding is eleven point five million. Calpers, calsters, rate increases. Fiscal plan and instructional support, four point six million for ABC. And it focuses on college affordability, student needs, instruction, academic pathways, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the other priorities shown above. The assumptions that were used in preparing the district's budget include a one point zero three percent total computational revenue deficit factor, the five point zero percent COLA that was previously mentioned, the emergency conditions allowance, which allows the district to use twenty nineteen, twenty FTES, an increase for the mandated block grant, rate increases for step and column, stirs and purrs, and state unemployment insurance. Open positions have been budgeted and COVID funds are restricted one-time funds. Shown here is the timeline for financial reporting and standard financial reporting deadlines are in place for twenty-one, twenty-two. This slide shows the FTES history and projections. This is tied directly to enrollment. And I want to spend a minute on this slide. In blue are our actual FTES going back to twenty twenty-one. In twenty-one, twenty-two is our projected FTES estimated based on actual enrollment numbers. And twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four are projected amounts assuming a two-year FTES recovery. That's an optimistic goal right there. In orange here is the impact of the emergency conditions allowance. The difference, the variance from our emergency conditions allowance to our actual FTES projected figures are thirty-three hundred FTES. That's a drop of thirty percent from twenty nineteen, twenty. So that's how far off we are from our twenty nineteen, twenty numbers. So we're going to be looking forward to a quick recovery here, and that's what we're going to need to sustain. Moving forward, higher emerg, higher education emergency relief funds or HERF funds, as they're known, we've had three allocations. The first allocation, HERF one, was ten point nine million. Those funds have been fully expended and or dispersed. The second allocation, HERF two, that was twenty-two point seven million of the institutional aid, ten point eight million remains. MSI and student aid have both been dispersed or expended. And HERF three, the allocation was thirty-nine point nine million. And almost all of those funds remain to be expended and or dispersed. Shown here are twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one estimated actuals for all funds. For all funds, revenues totaled one hundred and seventy-three point six million. Expenditures, two hundred and ten point eight million, leaving a deficit of thirty-seven million. That deficit is due to measure AV funds being expended. The twenty twenty-one general fund revenue, which includes both unrestricted and restricted funds, was one hundred and twenty point four million. The breakdown of that is nineteen percent of that was federal, seventy-one percent was state, and ten percent local. Moving on to general fund expenditures, expenditures totaled one hundred and seven point three million. Again, this is restricted and unrestricted both. The breakdown by category is shown here. Salaries made up sixty-eight percent of the total. These figures are somewhat skewed because of one-time COVID funds being included in this part. And the twenty twenty-one unrestricted estimated actuals are shown on the next slide. We had a beginning fund balance of twenty-six point one million, revenues of eighty-four point eight million, expenditures of seventy-one point seven million, and an ending fund balance of thirty-nine point two million. Assignments include seven point five million for capital project protection, six million reserved for the OPEP trust, five point five million for pension stabilization, and other assignments as shown above. The unassigned ending fund balance is sixteen point six million, which equates to a reserve of twenty-three point one percent. Moving on to the adopted budget, the twenty-one, twenty-two adopted budget. All funds are shown on this slide. Revenues total two hundred and thirty point eight million. Expenditures total three hundred point two million, leaving a deficit of sixty-nine point four million. Again, due primarily to measure AV funds being expended. Revenues total one hundred and sixty-eight point eight million. Thirty-two percent of that is federal revenue, sixty percent is state, and eight percent is local. Twenty-one, twenty-two general fund expenditures for restricted and unrestricted total one hundred and seventy point two million. The breakdown between categories is shown in the pie chart. Thirty-seven percent here is shown in other outgo, and that represents the balance of the HERF funds that needs to be expended or dispersed. And then the twenty-one, twenty-two unrestricted adopted budget. After assignments has a beginning fund balance of sixteen point six million, total revenue of eighty-six million, total expenditures of eighty-seven point four million, leaving an ending fund balance of fifteen point two million. After assignments, the unassigned ending fund balance is fourteen point two million, which equates to a reserve of sixteen point three percent. Showed next are our assumptions for the projections for twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four. Some of the most important assumptions here is again that we will have a two-year recovery for FTES. COLA has been included. We've budgeted for open positions and increasing rates, et cetera. Based on these assumptions, revenues grow from eighty-six million in twenty-one, twenty-two to ninety-two point seven million in twenty-two, twenty-three. Expenditures grow from eighty-seven point four million in twenty-one, twenty-two to eighty-nine point nine million in twenty-three, twenty-four. The unassigned ending fund balance in twenty-three, twenty-four is projected to be fourteen point six million, which equates to a reserve of sixteen point two percent. Shown next is an alternate scenario, a scenario in which our FTES doesn't recover to pre-COVID levels until four years instead of two. And the red dots show that four-year recovery. What's critical in this projection is that we are above the hold harmless level, but significantly below our current funding level. So the longer we stay below our initial funding level, that's a deficit, that's a drop in revenue that we're going to be seeing. So since we are above hold harmless, those hold harmless extensions that go through twenty-four, twenty-five do not offer us protection at this level. So the impact under this scenario to twenty-two, twenty-three is a drop in revenue from eighty-six million in twenty-one, twenty-two to seventy-nine point six million in twenty-two, twenty-three. That would leave a deficit of nine point five million. A similar deficit would occur in twenty-three, twenty-four. So the risk to the district with the continuing loss of students is substantial, and that's something we felt needed to be pointed out to the board and to the public. Finally, looking forward, the district has healthy reserves, but there is significant risk to revenue due to the loss of FTES. There is continued uncertainty with COVID nineteen. Costs are increasing. And finally, we look forward to the governor's proposed budget in January for hopefully additional funding opportunities. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Reeves?
First of all, do we consider the students that are online, full-time students? Are they full-time students?
We do consider them in the formula, yes.
And state of California considers them full-time students, just like the in-person students. So we get the same amount of money?
We get the same amount of credit for those students, yes, sir.
How many students do we have on campus that are given a break and they don't pay tuition? What percentage?
Mr. Reeves, I do not have that information on me right now.
I can, I can help. Over eighty percent of our students receive financial aid to go to attend school there, whether it's through the College California Promise Grant, which used to be the Bog waiver. We also have a promise program here on campus that takes care of the tuition and then the Pell Grant. Did I miss anything here?
Thank you, President.
Well, does that mean their, President Knudsen, did that mean their fees are waived at college?
They're waived, but the equivalent of being paid. We don't, we don't have to send a check to the state for their fees.
Okay, and we 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 get money for them state for them being students?
We get apportionment for them, yes.
Okay. These are, you have a lot of assumptions, so you may be coming back to see us. Because on the back, the last page, the healthy reserves and COVID nineteen, you know, a lot of this is uncertain. We don't know.
Yes, sir.
Shut us down again or what?
Yes, sir.
So this is all assumption so far. Okay, well, good presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question. I guess I want to know is that twelve percent the state's minimum requirement for reserves? Or is it a number that was chosen?
The twelve percent is a policy, I believe we have. The district has.
Board policy minimum, state minimum is eight percent or five to eight. If you get to five percent, the FICMAT team shows up.
I'm sure. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, I have a couple of questions and I'm, Mr. Bar, can we go back to the, I don't even know what page it is. It says twenty twenty-one general fund expenditures. And when I add up, it looks like sixty-eight percent of our general fund in twenty twenty-one went out to salaries and benefits. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then when I look at twenty-one, twenty-two, I'm looking at forty-nine percent?
Yes, that's due to the HERF funds, that's due to those one-time COVID funds. Because we have so, so many HERF funds, so many one-time restricted funds that have yet to be distributed. They're actually included in the other outgo, the thirty-seven percent. So that's what's skewing the figures. If we look at just the unrestricted budget, our salaries probably account for about eighty-four percent of our budget.
And I also want to ask, in listening to some of our speakers this evening, I'm I'm a little concerned about when I hear them talking about the IT issues that they're having on campus. Because do you know off the top of your head about how much of our budget will be allocated to keep the IT and upgrade the IT for this, this twenty-one, twenty-two school year?
You know, we, we have a significant amount of HERF funds for IT-related expenditures. Those expenditures qualify for those restricted funds. So I don't think at this point money is a restriction for that. We have sufficient funds to to address those issues, to purchase the needed IT equipment. That I don't believe is an issue ongoing. We we have put aside five hundred thousand for IT refresh needs annually. So that will be a part of the budget. But we have significant resources for for IT investments at this time.
And we're planning for those, and we spent over two million in the last year.
So the man, so let me just do a follow-up then, Mr. Bar. Do we have the necessary manpower to meet the needs of the faculty when they're in their class delivering, you know, their lessons? And they have these IT issues. Do we have the manpower to go to all these varied, various classrooms and take care of the problem?
Mrs. Gaines, I believe we do. I believe IT is consistently, is consistently rated very high through the internal surveys that they provide. The general feedback I'm hearing throughout the district is they are very satisfied with IT's response. And the services, obviously, there there are issues that come up, but we have a, we have a great team here and we have, we have good full resources.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Item twelve, reported closed session action. There was no reportable action from closed session, so we will move on to consent agenda. May here a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Discussion.
I would like to pull thirteen. I would like to pull thirteen point ten, thirteen point eleven.
Okay. In that case, make your motion to approve consent agenda items thirteen point one to thirteen point nine and thirteen point twelve.
So move.
Second. Discussion. Advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, passes with five yes votes. Item thirteen point ten revision of board policy twenty two hundred for duties and responsibilities, Mr. Reeves.
Well, we have some revisions and, um, I wanted to talk about it before we, we vote on it. Some of the revisions of, uh. Board duties and responsibilities, and we also have one on committees of the board. Is this significantly different than what, what's before, uh, President Knudsen?
No.
It's basically the same. I see where it's been approved.
This is a, this is a regular review.
Both of them.
Yes, both of them.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. That's all I want.
May here a motion to approve consent agenda items thirteen point ten and thirteen point eleven.
So move.
Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen action items, fourteen point one approval of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two adopted budget, may here a motion.
So move.
Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point two. Approval of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two athletic fall, non traditional schedules for baseball, softball and basketball, may your motion.
Second.
Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point three. Approval of equal oppor- employment opportunity fund, multiple method allocation model certification form. Fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, may your motion. Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point four, approval of consultant service agreement to teach foster and kinship care education program. Specialized training classes and or seminars for the period of September fourteenth, twenty twenty one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty six, may here a motion.
So move.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I noticed that a lot of the agreements that are coming up, they're five year agreements. Is that, uh, something new or is that usually done that way?
These, these types of agreements are typically five years in duration and they may have annual adjustments. But they typically are five years in length, and this one, and many of our grants are as well. And we may get annual adjustments in the allocation, but it is a five year agreement, yes.
Thank you.
They're giving us money.
Thank you. Further discussion? Advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, passes with five yes votes. Fourteen point five approval of consultant service agreement between Enel Valley Community College District and Quality Behavior Solutions Incorporated. May here a motion.
So move. Second.
Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point six. Approval of amendment A to amendment number one to agreement with auditing firm. Jose Elias Wilson Dominguez and Levitt C W B L Certified Public Accountants, may here a motion.
Second.
Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point seven approval of the master agreement with timely M D for tele health services. From October thirteenth, twenty twenty one through October twelfth, twenty twenty two, may here a motion.
So move. Second.
Discussion.
Mister President?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain from voting for this, but I do have some comments. Uh, is, is this the, uh? Service that takes care of the covid, that traces the covid or has something to do with covid?
No, this is student hu- health services. They can, they call in and get referrals. This is for student issues. It, it's not covid specifically, it's for all issues.
Okay, I'm still gonna change. Okay, uh, thank you very much.
Further discussion? Advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, passes with four yes votes and one abstention, fourteen point eight. Approval to extend contract to B M T X Incorporated, D B A, M F A C merger sub incorporated. Bank Mobile Technologies with her funds, may here a motion.
Second.
Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, passes with five yes votes, fourteen point nine. Approval to extend the use of Fisher Scientifics Cooperative Agreement, may your motion.
So move. Second.
Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point ten approval to continue the utilization of a consultant for covid tracking. And tracing per state guidelines with cares funds. I have two comment cards for fourteen point ten.
Can you hear me from here? Alrighty, you've already heard a little bit about this tonight, so not to mince words. I'm going to be really clear about this. The current regiment of contact tracing is a chaotic mess. The contact tracer doesn't seem to have perhaps access to enough information to do their job. Uh, the quarantine notices are coming too late to be helpful. In my own classes, just to kind of, I know the plural of anecdote does not become anecdata. But in my own classes, I've had eleven students officially placed on quarantine by A V C in the first four weeks of the semester. I have sixty five unduplicated students in my face to face sections right now. So if I look at over sixteen point nine percent of my students being quarantined every four weeks. Then by the end of the sixteen week semester, I expect over two thirds of the class to have been quarantined. It looks like it's only a matter of time before the entire class, including myself, is exposed. Um, in communicating with A V C's covid nineteen student and contact H R email addresses. I've received the following statements or been B C C'd on them by other faculty. They're a day behind. There, they have an entire class of students quarantined, but somehow not the instructor. The students are quarantined over a week into the quarantine period after an exposure. Um, this is a direct quote, "There is no mechanism in place to notify the instructors of all class exposed students of their quarantine." Um, end quote, "That a student will be attending remotely when the course is solely face to face and more." Um, I've been B C C'd on emails where faculty are pleading with contact tracing to let them know if they have been exposed. Or if they are clear to return to campus and faculty who have been told by their students that their entire class has been quarantined. But only the students have been notified, so that's really exciting for the instructor. By the way, after four weeks of class, there are instructors who have already been exposed twice on campus. Frankly, this is sad, a little bit ridiculous and dangerous. How are these contact tracers trained? What caseload is appropriate so that they can send out notifications in a timely manner? I don't want to say or imply that the current contact tracer is not competent. But I do believe that this person may be overwhelmed by the sheer volume of cases and exposures. Simply extending this contract is an insufficient and inept response to the current situation. Members of the Board of Trustees, please, you need to figure out a better solution, an additional solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Doctor Alex Schreier.
Good evening, can you hear me, Mister President, board members? Thank you. Um, I have to comment, it's, um, on the same unfortunate situation with a covid tracer. I tried to, uh, structure this in a way so I don't waste anyone's time. I don't want you to hear again what's been said. I, just, everything I read to you will be, um, I come back up with emails. Sadly, as I'm sitting here in this meeting, I receive, um, I just received an email that one of my student has covid. In a class that been, has been quarantined from Saturday till Tuesday. Can you explain that to me? So, uh, just to be more specific, I received an email Saturday saying that this class, which is a whole class. Has been quarantined till Tuesday, this coming Tuesday. We don't meet on the weekend. We don't even meet Monday. So the class has been quar- quarantined. I, um, told the teacher, the, the, the covid person, I said, I'm sorry, there is another teacher. They had just class, had class with him yesterday. Did anyone ever check on us? I had so far seven covid students, a half a class or quarantine. Nobody ever even asked me, hey. How are you guys doing? So they assume we're good. Clearly, we are for now. Um, another, it's really not really funny, but it's kind of strange. So this class that I'm talking about that's been quarantined till Tuesday meets in a room. Smaller than this room, it's a forty eight lecture, le- lecturer of forty eight students. Half of them have been quarantined. The other half is still there. They have not been notified. But this mysterious email person, I tried to communicate with her, him, I think it's her. There is really not a lot of dialogue, emails arrive late. Usually they arrive after I point out who is sick because students are confident talking to me. And feel like this is a big mess. They are frustrated. We are frustrated. I was actually very happy to be back face to face. So are my other science colleagues and we are now trying to. I mean, I, I don't want to imagine what's going to happen if every week portions or the classes are being quarantined. What do we do? I mean, obviously, we don't, we don't really count, but, um. There needs to be a system in place and, and, and. This person, this system does not work. Um, I have another example, a student who worked in a lab under the same hood with another student. One of them got sick, covid email never ever notified the lab partner. I told him, you know, why don't you stay home, see how you feel? To this day, he hasn't received any email. Um, I have a couple of this and like I said, I am happy to provide the, the, the email exchange. So you can see the documentation to that. Um, I also received, a student was put on quarantine, showed up and I was like, oh, God. Well, I'm supposed to receive a, an email that he's been cleared. I have not, so I emailed the person and I said. Is the student supposed to be here? And she said, uh, no. I'm like, well, she's here anyways. Then she said, oh, never mind, yes. And the reason you didn't get the email is because it's been sent to another professor. Fantastic. So this is my main issue. Like I said, I was very happy to be face to face, but this is very depressing. And the morale is low. Students are also not keeping up. There is no coherent. Instruction happening and, um, I just have to say one more thing that's really not for this, but I just have to say. Trash has not been removed in a very long time. I think over a week. And none of the offices, none of the classrooms, we don't have wipes, we don't have anything, but we're okay teaching to a lot of students. Yet the person cannot even pick up my trash when I'm in, not in my office. I'm sorry and thank you. And, uh, I hope this situation with the covid tracing. I mean, we wouldn't have to do all that, would we? Just require vaccines or testing both or something. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, may here a motion for fourteen point ten.
Um, uh, President Adams, may I ask that, may I request that we table fourteen point ten until? I, I don't feel like I have enough, uh, understanding and clarity on what's going on with covid, how we are actually doing the. The covid tracking.
Can I, maybe I can answer the question. Actually, procedure is I get a motion, a second discussion and then.
Okay. Thank you.
Make a motion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Yes, I'm just, um, for me to vote in favor of, uh, I, I don't know who the consultant is. And I'm, I'm sure they're doing their very best, but however. I, I think we need to perhaps step back and take a look at what we do have in place. Contact tracing is very, very difficult. I can only imagine in, on a campus this size. Um, and there are certain procedures that not everybody needs to be removed. Uh, and I think there's some conflict on who's being removed and who's not, et cetera, here. I would just like us to have some, um, a better understanding of what our covid tracking and tracing looks like at A V C. Before I vote in favor of it.
This is a single consultant that we have been using since last summer, so it's a renewal of the ongoing contract. She is a retired faculty member from here and she is a healthcare professional. In addition to that, we are hiring two more people to assist her that will be coming very soon and getting the work done and the tracing done. There are limitations into how much we can notify certain people because of HIPAA violations and what L A County Health will allow us to disclose. So we're trying to follow that as quickly as we can. So we are responding to it. We are hiring more people. This is a continuation of the existing one. If we do not pass this contract tonight, we will be down to staff only. And this is in addition to existing staff that we are already have working. The, it's the, the issues with students, not with staff. That's why we hired the consultant to assist with student tracking. And we are hiring two more people as we speak.
Further discussion?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Um, I do understand that. I, I understand that it is a choice between no consultant and just down to faculty. How long will it be before there's additional help on the way specifically?
Well, as quickly as we can make it happen. They do have to go through live scan. And they do have to go, you know, through D O J and live scan and all those kinds of things because they're working with students. So we have made contact with the two individuals within the last ten days. I know that for a fact. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head where they are in the process of being hired.
Okay, and, and my second question is, once you hire the two people, if this consultant is still running the contact. Uh, tracing, uh, how can we expect it to be different?
Well, the, the people that we're hiring are trained. So they, they will be able to, and their healthcare providers, so they will be able to work immediately in assisting and reducing the workload. And we're, and I'm not trying to mitigate anything here at all, but the numbers are dropping.
Okay.
Mister Reeves?
Uh, yes. Uh, President Knudsen, if we don't okay this, then we don't have anybody. Is that true?
You don't have an outside consultant assisting, what you have are two staff members.
Two staff, so, uh, and you don't know how soon she will have two assistants.
I'm assuming it's going to be very soon. We've started the process almost two weeks ago.
So what is this, what is this costing us for the consultant? You have any idea?
I don't remember, but it, I don't care how much the cost cares is paying for it, and if we don't do it, we've got even bigger problems.
Well, I, I really don't like to be put under the gun like this, uh, you know.
Well, federal money is paying for the consultant. And if we don't do that, we won't have, we'll have less manpower than we do right now.
It, but the point, uh, President, is that, is it manpower that works or is it just there and manpower? What I'm hearing from the staff is that it's just manpower, it's not, not that effective. So I'm, I'm going to try to re-ask the question. Um, the two people that will be hired, I know they will be trained, but who will be in charge of contact and tracing? Will it still be this consultant or new hire?
Well, the consultant isn't in charge of it now. We run it through H R. We have a project supervisor that is a permanent staff. This person is assisting in that work. And she was hired because of her healthcare background. And the willingness to do that, and that's what we are also doing with the others.
And Mister Knudsen, just one more question. Um, is the person, our, our staff member who was hired with the health background. Is she working full time as like contact tracer and covid person?
I don't believe she, I don't believe she's working forty hours. Well, she's working forty hours a week, but she wasn't originally hired for that. We've had to extend those hours. She was hired last spring.
I, I'm just saying, I. I'm familiar with how much time it takes and I'm just wondering. I, I, I love the fact that we have a couple more people coming on board. Because I think if it's done properly and people are to be informed by the health department, of the health department mandates. And, and requirements, that it's going to take somebody there probably eight hours a day at least.
And that's what we're hiring.
I think you have to have this because you're going to set yourself back if you don't do it. And you're going to have an additional. And you're gonna have an additional problem, this is going on all over the state of California, it's not just here. It's happening in all of our elementary schools, it's happening in our high schools. Contract tracing is incredibly difficult and notifications are extremely difficult. And I know my grandkids have come in contact with us in the situations and a lot of that information is slow coming. So it's difficult, part of the problem is the county reporting systems and how their procedures and processes are going. And they make it extra difficult, I think some of this stuff isn't logical or doesn't make sense, that's unfortunately the way it is. But I think if you don't do this, you've taken a step back, I think you have to work toward solving the issue and getting it better. It's never gonna be perfect, bottom line, if anybody is expecting perfection, you're living in a fantasy world, not gonna happen, hasn't happened anytime during this virus anywhere in the country. From universities to community colleges, high schools, grade schools. And I know that from Tennessee to California, same thing. So you have to do the best you can and hopefully we can clean up the issues and make it work, but that's what you have to do. We have to work with what we have and attempt to make that better, okay? If we step back and don't do this, we're sending ourselves over a cliff.
Further discussion?
Yes. Is it possible to have another person help the consultant, another employee?
As I stated earlier, we're hiring two more.
When?
We started ten days ago, they have to go through DOJ screening to be able to work with students.
That they help the faculty with the concerns that they have?
Yes, to be able to work with students, you have to go through what's known as LifeScan. And that has to be completed before you can work with students.
So any day now, that person will be on board to help?
We're, we're moving as quickly as we can and it's two people in addition to this. Okay, and we've, we've shortened it up so that we're doing short-term hourly, so we can get them here as quickly as we can.
I just have one additional comment and then I'll, I'll be done if that's okay. I do believe with what the gentleman who teaches biology read to us as facts of data of who we serve. Over eighty percent of our students are, maybe it was the other gentleman, please forgive me for not remembering. But over eighty percent of our students are African-American Latino students, students of color. Who as we have heard are two times as likely to be infected or die from the virus. And I think it's incumbent upon us, I don't believe that the staff here, from what I've heard tonight, that they're looking for perfection, I believe they're looking for effectiveness and it's reasonable. Um, so with that said, I, I do hope that we get the two people on board as soon as possible. What role the consultant is playing, he, she is not running it, they're consulting. Um, I'm hoping that by the time we return next month, that this problem is resolved. It, it could be better and I think we can all admit that.
Further discussion? You have a motion, a second on the table, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No, no.
I will say aye, passes three two. Fourteen point eleven, approval of agreement number twenty-one dash W two five nine between South Bay Workforce Investment Board Incorporated and the Antle Valley Community College through June third of twenty twenty-two, may your motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, fourteen point twelve. Approval for the agreement with Ascend Learning Holdings LLC DBA Cognito Solutions LLC, may your motion?
So move.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point thirteen. Approval of agreement between Summit Medical Group and Antle Valley College from September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, may your motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President, I'm gonna abstain from this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes and one abstention, fourteen point fourteen. Approval of master services agreement with Cumulus Technology Services, may your motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, fourteen point fifteen. Approval to enter into an agreement with Vantage Technology Consulting Group with major AV funds, may your motion?
Second.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, fourteen point sixteen. Approval to utilize Department of Veterans Affairs Federal Supply Schedule Contract Number three six F seven nine seven two one D O O seven three with Abbott Rabbit DX for COVID antigen test to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five with birth funds, may your motion?
Second.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, fourteen point seventeen. Approval to utilize the Foundation for California Community Colleges Master Agreement with Biocept Incorporated, may your motion?
Second.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, fourteen point eighteen. Approval to utilize the Foundation for California Community Colleges Master Agreement with Fulgent Therapeutics LLC, may your motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Fourteen point nineteen, approval to utilize the Foundation for California Community Colleges Master Agreement with Innovative Educators Incorporated, may your motion?
So move.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, fourteen point twenty. Approval to utilize Tyco Fire and Security US Management Incorporated DBA Johnson Controls Fire Protection LP Simplex Grinnell LP's Piggyback Agreement through Sourcewell, formerly NJPA National Joint Powers Alliance with Major AV Funds, may your motion?
So move.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, fourteen point twenty-one. Approval to enter in negotiations for ongoing laboratory of record services, may your motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, fourteen point twenty-two. Approval to enter into negotiations with PPL Incorporated for executive search consulting services, may your motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'd like to make a statement, please.
Certainly.
Fellow board members, administration, faculty and students. The world has changed since the board last selected a superintendent president. We now have to do what will probably be our most important task. Seeking a successor to President Knudsen. You noticed I said successor, not replacement. Even though I haven't always agreed with him as a citizen or as a board member, he has been a steadfast hand on the helm the last decade. And obviously, there was a lot I did agree with him on. We need to think out of the box in our selection. Specifically spell out the specific traits we are looking for. Allow the applicants to demonstrate by anonymous essay their feelings on those items. Have a search committee evaluate those essays and give us a handful of finalists. Then the board will zero in on the items of which we individually are concerned and on those candidates who hit the marks. I believe this method of objective scrutiny and campus participation will lead us to the man or the woman we feel is most likely to continue the progress this board and the president have made the last decade, thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes on a four one vote, Mr. Reeves dissenting. Fourteen point twenty-three. Approval of insurance program coverage extension proposal and statewide educational wrap-up program for discovery lab project seventeen dash zero three nine with major AV funds, may your motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point twenty-four. Approval to purchase Microsoft software products and services from computer land, may your motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point twenty-five. Approval of furniture purchase Sierra School Equipment Swing Space eleven eighteen dash zero one one with major AV funds, may your motion?
Second.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point twenty-six. Approval to purchase AV equipment from Golden Sark Technology Incorporated for discovery lab with major AV funds, may your motion?
So move.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point twenty-seven. Approval to purchase network equipment from NE Systems Incorporated for discovery lab with major AV funds, may your motion?
So move.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point twenty-eight. Approval of change orders for Sage Hall seventeen dash zero three one with major AV funds, may your motion?
So move.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approve, opposed? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point twenty-nine. Approval of change orders for campus security project seventeen dash zero four zero with major AV funds, may your motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point thirty. Approval to file notice of completion and resolution of acceptance on the campus infrastructure project seventeen dash zero two nine, Rawlings Mechanical Corporation with major AV funds, may your motion?
Second.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point thirty-one. Approval of file notice of completion and resolution of acceptance on the campus security project seventeen dash zero four zero Nibble Link Masonry Corporation Concrete Work with Major AV Funds, may your motion?
So move.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point thirty-two. Approval of final notice of completion and resolution of acceptance on the campus security project seventeen dash zero four zero Nibble Link Masonry Corporation Masonry Work with Major AV Funds, may your motion?
So move.
Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes, item fifteen, reports and announcements, Academic Senate, Mr. Dr. McGovern.
Uh, thank you, I'm acting on a proxy for, for Van, uh, he couldn't be here today. I'm the first executive officer on the, uh, Executive Council for the Academic Senate and, uh, he has prepared a statement which I will read to you right now. Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees, President Knudsen and members of the ABC community. As we entered to the fifth week of the semester, faculty and the standing committees of the Senate are engaged in the work of the college in and out of the classroom. The Academic Senate appreciates the many faculty who have accepted appointments to serve on, uh, stand in Senate hiring, tenure and participatory governance committees. We also welcome Dr. Jason Bowen as a newly elected Vice President of the Academic Senate. As the semester has begun, the Senate has received much feedback on both the application of high flex approach and the district's efforts in response to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic and its effects on our campus community. Much of the feedback concerned high flex is focused on the ongoing adjustment to the new technology and the difficult challenges faculty are facing from class to class. While both IT and the instructional design team have provided immense support and introductory training, many faculty teaching in the high flex environment have expressed frustration with the technical issues that contribute to instances of ineffective instruction and disrupted student engagement. Time intended for instructed has been spent on managing the technology in the classroom. In regards to the COVID nineteen pandemic, some faculty have expressed concern, even alarm with the district's preparation, communication and response to the current situation. The Senate encourages the board and the district to increase its effort in providing access to vaccination and/or testing opportunities, strengthen the COVID nineteen protocols and expectations and working with campus local and state entities to maintain and provide the safest environment possible for our campus community, thank you.
Thank you. Antle Valley College Federation of Teachers, Dr. Robert.
Thank you and good evening again. I'm afraid you're not gonna be much of a fan of what I have to say tonight. Uh, we keep hearing about the best of intentions this semester. I would argue that when dealing with the deadly disease, what matters is outcomes and impact. I was going to say something about the impact of the current mess with the contact tracing and quarantines, but I very much appreciate your discussion earlier and I, I think we got our point across and I'm hopeful that this will be resolved soon. However, regarding the raw numbers of exposures, what is the outcome of having nearly thirty faculty that I know of exposed to COVID since the beginning of the semester? And seven during the week prior? Pretending these things are not happening is not serving any purpose other than causing a very large amount of stress to students, staff and faculty. Intention doesn't really matter when the actual outcome appears to be chaos, exposure and maybe even eventually liability from these delayed inaccurate quarantines. By the way, the other outcome is that faculty are in widespread agreement that ABC's leadership is incompetent and without empathy. There is a psychological impact of constant exposure, I personally know people that have died of COVID. It horrifies me that I could bring this disease home to my vulnerable family members. And I'm deeply troubled that despite taking precautions, I will most likely be exposed to COVID in my workplace. I and many others have tried to raise awareness of this issue. Yet here we are, months later, every other community college in the county appears to be seeking better outcomes while ABC is left in the dust with good intentions. Beyond the impact of being constantly concerned about bringing home a deadly disease to my family, the effect of the revolving door of student quarantines is an ongoing increase to our workloads as we correspond with missing students, report them to contact tracing and set up alternate assignments. Maybe I sound angry, I am angry, this is my health, my family's health and my community's health. We must all play our part to end this pandemic. The part an institution of higher education should play is to lead by example and reduce community spread by requiring either vaccination or regular testing of the entire campus community. If that can't be done, faculty should be allowed to return classes to the online synchronous modality. Faculty are angry, it's not just me, in a recent poll of Federation members, a majority support a requirement for either vaccination or regular mandatory testing. An even larger majority support allowing faculty to return their courses to the online synchronous modality modality for the remainder of the semester. ABC Board of Trustees, you are choosing by your inaction to show us your intention to let us become sick due to workplace exposure. Given the number of people on campus, it's a certainty that some members of the campus community will become extremely sick, in fact, some already have. And it's possible that some might even die, you can fix this before it becomes a terrible irreversible mistake. I urge you to hold a special session to implement a resolution requiring, at the least, that everyone who comes on campus must be either vaccinated or show proof of a recent negative test. In addition, I urge you to allow faculty to use their discretion to move face-to-face courses to the online synchronous modality, especially if numbers do not dramatically improve. This was shown honest intention to keep the campus community safe, thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Antle Valley College Federation Classified Employees, I see no, okay?
Hello, my name is Desiree Liam, second Vice President for the Federation of Classified Employees and we do not have a report, thank you.
Thank you. Confidential management supervisor administrator employees, Michelle Hernandez.
Good evening, Michelle Hernandez, for, uh, I am the Chair of CMS uh, for the twenty-two, twenty-one to twenty, um, three, um, series end of, of years. And so I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that we do have, um, a few new members to our, um, CMS board. Um, and so just to give you who all may, you may see in this seat or who may represent the CMS um across campus, we have Nichelle Williams, who is our secretary, Jim Firth, who is our treasurer, Crystal Ellis, who's representing confidential, Erin Tagg, who represents management, James Yocum, who represents super, uh, the supervisors, and Greg Borman, who represents a small group of our administrators who have joined and who have um wanted to be represented by us. Um, right now, we are in the midst of going through some of our needs assessments on a survey that we conducted um, the first few weeks of school, um, looking at all of our membership and saying, what is it that we want to move forward with? Um, and what are some of the highlights that we really want to make sure that our um confidential managers and supervisors are able to thrive here on campus? And then also any professional development and any other needs assessments. So um, once we have that uh meeting in October, then we'll be able to report out the outcomes of that survey.
Thank you. Associate Student Organization, Ms. Rivera.
Thank you. Uh, the President of ASO was unable to make it due to transportation issues, so I will be reading his report. So ASO currently has nine members with five executive officers and four senators. They are looking to possibly confirm a Vice President of Academic Affairs at the next meeting. And I've started to build and take shape of our goals and will continue them in our upcoming meeting. We're also exploring ways of ge- getting more meaningful feedback from students as well as discussing the details of several ad hoc committees tackle key problems the ASO officers have noticed. Thank you.
Thank you. Antle Valley College Foundation, Diane Knippel.
Uh, good evening, Board and Presidents. Um, I've got great news today, so let's, let's get happy for a little bit, okay? Been a tough meeting. So, um, twenty fifteen, our Antle Valley College Foundation Board, uh, which is a volunteer board, uh, but it also includes um, our President of the Trustees, Michael Adams and Ed Knudsen, launched a new strategy on endowment growth. And an endowment, just kind of quick one-on-one, is a ten thousand dollar investment um, that stays in perpetuity and continues to create interest. And uh, so we said, well, let's get focused on that. So the good news today is we started in twenty fifteen with twenty seven endowments. Today, we are at one hundred. The best news to that is that, that because of the, the hundred, it's an investment strategy. So we started at four point six million in twenty fifteen. Today, we are at ten million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand. So I have to thank the community who makes the donations, the board, my staff, and just a whole concerted effort together. We also um support a lot of scholarships. Um, so over the last five years, we have contributed about one million dollars to support students, a hundred, one thousand three hundred and seventy-one students, um, with the average award being seventeen hundred. In twenty fifteen, the average award was two hundred and fifty. So uh, it's, it's, the strategy's working. We're sleeping on the strategy and I'm so proud to be able to represent the organization and say, great job, everybody on my team. Thank you.
Thank you. Officer President, President, Mr. Knudsen.
Uh, just a couple of things, very quickly. Congratulations to the foundation. You're making it work. And what that means for our students and programmatic support is significant. As a matter of information, we began testing on campus today on Monday and Wednesday from eleven to two. Today, we had forty tests. On August thirty first, we had a vaccine site set up in this room. We had six walk-in vaccines. In April of this past spring, AV, the Los Angeles County Public Health designated two hundred doses of the vaccine to ABC. We had nine appointments. We're working now with LA County to do some other things. We will be offering testing for students and employees at no charge and no charge to your insurance every Monday and Wednesday between eleven and two in the courtyard at UHazy Hall. That will continue throughout the semester. We're working with LA County Health to offer a CARES Act testing. This is the rapid test in our stadium parking lot for the public at least one day a week. And we will be working at offering it one day a week over at the Baumdahl Center. These things have been in the planning stages for over a month. There are forty-two of seventy-two districts in the state that have mandated some form of vaccine or, and/or testing. The seven-day average for positive rates in LA County this morning was one point eight five percent. So we are paying attention to the data. We are responding the best way we know how. And we are doing the best we can with the restrictions that LA County Public Health places on the way we do our business. And I'm sorry that it has taken a little bit longer than we had hoped. In response, the numbers dropped and then they went back up and but it has dropped from six point eight positive seven-day average to one point eight since mid-August. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member comments, Ms. Rivera.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, I would like to encourage everyone to vote, if you have not already done so, for the recall election tomorrow. Students, staff, community members, it is important that we do this um for the outcome of our state. I also wanted to report that I attended a workshop last month with student trustees across the state to connect with them and learn how to be more effective in different ways to represent students. So I was happy to attend that. I would like to thank everyone who gave a public comment today. I appreciate being able to hear your thoughts and opinions. It helps to know what you think. And I hope that contract tracing does improve with the two new employees. And that way we can continue to have tracing and hopefully it can become more effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harvey?
No comment.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Reeves.
Um, what you saw tonight, the dialogue and discussion about things, this is democracy. And I'm proud that we had this dialogue tonight and I hope we continue to have it with the faculty and staff and the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines.
Uh, I wanna uh say to Ms. Knippel, congratulations, just to be um thought of in the way that the AVTA wants to honor you. That's an incredible uh achievement in itself. And so I think it's a well-deserved one on your part. And I also want to say thank you for all the great work you do for the foundation because as someone who reads those scholarships every year, i- it's beautiful to see that we are able to increase the amount we give and uh, we're seeing more and more students uh applying for those even at our high schools and our local high schools. So congratulations for that. I want to thank all of the Vice Presidents who's, who gave their reports this evening. They were, uh, they were very good and very uh purposeful and insightful. I learned a lot every time I um I hope you uh you know, are okay with my questions, but a- as a board member, there's sometimes there's things I need to ask. So thank you for those uh great reports that you gave. And I, I just want to say to all the faculty and all the staff members that uh I did hear what everybody said this evening. And I'm also a little concerned that when we did open the uh opportunity for, for the vaccines and for the testing, we had a very, very, very poor showing. Uh, I'm not sure what that, that equates to maybe people not knowing, but I, I don't know. I don't even want to go there right now, but there, I think as Mr. Buffalo said earlier, there is, there's always gonna be two sides to this coin and it, we have to sort of uh err on the side of caution to not make that political statement because it's really all about the health and the safety of our students and, and our staff. That's, that's what really our concerns should be. So um, I'm, I'm very, I'm very interested to see where this board goes in the immediate future with regard to uh putting a mandate on uh having a vaccine and requiring weekly testing. So that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buffalo.
Wow. Interesting meeting tonight. A lot of things came out of this. Um number one, and I, I get some of your concerns and some of your issues. This is a hell of a lot more difficult than you understand. I dealt with LA County Public Health for twenty-five years. I'm telling you, that's a difficult group to deal with. Their requirements and how they do things. But we try to work with them the best we can. We try to follow the processes and procedures, what they will allow, what they won't allow. And because that's what they're in charge, basically, in all honesty. That's who's really in charge. Governor maybe should be in charge, but he's dealt it to the local counties uh to take care of this. Um, one of the things that uh also came up tonight, and I'd kinda like to get a little report, is on the tech side, and I know we're dealing with new technology and how we're doing this. And I know there's some difficulties with it. I'd kinda like to get a feel for that if we could uh, and what we're doing to resolve it. And I've heard some different things about some of the miking and some of the classrooms working really well because it's overhead and some not working well. And I know we can't necessarily outfit everything accordingly. But I, I, I would like to get a report and see what we're doing to, to resolve that. Um, the, as far as some of the information that was, that was said tonight, and I looked at some of it. I, I track this stuff pretty carefully. I read for newspapers every day. And I would recommend the ALE Day, LA Daily News. If you want to know about COVID tracking and what's going on with LA County, they're the best source of it because they, they do it dedicated an entire page. They have a story. They have all the numbers. They have the quotes from the county officials. And you'll get a much better picture. The numbers are dropping. They have been dropping. And the surge is waning. And for example, in LA County, the surge is soaring in San Luis Obispo County because it hit them a lot later than LA County. So I think that's what we have to look forward to. This is a difficult situation because you're always going to have some unknown factors here. But one thing that was talked about tonight, and I want to make this really clear, this is really important. We lost a lot of students when we shut down. We lost a lot of students. I had a lot of student complaints about not liking the online. We don't like sitting there watching Zoom in our bedrooms. This doesn't work. And we lost those students. I still talk to those students. Some of those students are now back on campus because we're on campus. I walk this campus probably three or four days a week. I talk to students. They are glad to be back. It may not be perfect. There may be problems, but they are glad to be back in person. And if we, and it was explained tonight, there is a very, very serious risk problem to this college and every other community college in the state of California if numbers continue to drop in enrollments. And we're facing that danger. And we've got to be open and we've got to market and get to those students and get them back on campus and grow our enrollment. That's not easy. And if you keep trying to play online and do this and do that, which they're not happy with, then we're going to lose numbers and that's going to put us at risk. I think that came out of that financial report tonight. And you can see that. And we need to start factoring that in. The faculty need to understand that. Some of our faculty do. Now, we have different opinions of people walking in. You've got Dr. Newby, who I have a lot of respect for, really has issues with the vaccine. You have other people that think we should mandate it. I get that personally, every meeting. I encourage people to get vaccinated. I'm vaccinated. I sought out the vaccination. I didn't wait. I sought it out. And I think it's a good way to avoid the seriousness of the disease. Most people don't have any issues with it if they get it. But there are a few. And if you have other conditions like diabetes, then you better take a serious look at getting that vaccine and protecting yourself. And I have friends that didn't and they're in the hospital right now. So those are the things I, I, I want to tell you that, that it's really important that we pull together. I understand that it's new. I understand the technology in some of the classrooms is new and you're gonna have problems. You ever seen technology, new technology where you didn't have problems? Seriously? Who does that? Who makes that product? I don't care if it's an iPhone or a computer or a pad. So we need to be aware of that and we need to pull together. If you have honest to goodness legitimate suggestions of how we can specifically improve something, that doesn't mean we don't like it. That means this is a suggestion of how we can do it. Then please bring them forth. Because we're willing to listen if you have something to contribute. But I don't want to hear people say, well, this doesn't work. Of course, it's easy to say that. Come forth and give us ideas that we can factor in or use. And maybe they don't work, but maybe they do. That's what we need from, that's what we need for the entire campus. To be able to sit back and say, this might be something you could use because we're all in this together. Including our student body. So any case, that's all I will say, other than have a good night and go Dodgers.
Okay, yeah, they need the help. Um, there is no need to go back in the closed session tonight, so the date of our next meeting is October eleventh, twenty twenty-one. You are adjourned.